Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright, councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Snipper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
And this evening we're going to start off with another in series of Ward nights, and tonight is Ward Six night, and welcome to everybody here from Ward Six. And Councilmember Schultz, did you have anything you want to say?
Just that I'm glad it's Ward Six night, and I look forward to this, and I encourage my constituents to attend and to come down here and have a free shot, as I would say, at the city council to talk about whatever's on their mind, as long as it's relevant to our community or to them personally. So I'm interested to hear what's on people's minds. You can come up here and just tear into this as much as you want, if you've got ideas, questions, anything is fair game on this. But so far it doesn't look like we have an enormous turnout, as we've had with a couple of the other wards tonight, but that's just evidence of the general happiness of my community.
Exactly.
And, but we're ready, you know, we've got the directors of the Department of Public Works and of the Housing Department, Captain Corsi here from the Police Department and others to answer questions or any comments that you might have. So welcome and thank you for coming tonight.
Anybody from Ward Six like to comment?
Good evening, Barry Howard, Wildwood Drive. First, I'd like to thank Tiffin Indian Kitchen at thirteen forty-one University Boulevard for providing food for tonight's reception. Also, in the same location is Adupe Palace South Indian Cuisine. Some people may be under the false impression that Adupe Palace has closed and went away, but actually their property was renovated and turned into Walgreens, but they have moved in with Tiffin, their sister business there. So they do still exist, just for the public record, and they're still there serving people wonderful South Indian cuisine. And so thank you for those two establishments for the food tonight. So I had a few things that I wanted to discuss. So one thing was a traffic-related issue, and so I'm not taking a shot at anybody. I prefer to have a conversation about this. I'm actually looking for some assistance from the city, and I actually have not only a complaint but a possible solution. So daily I take public transportation, and when I return home, I cross New Hampshire Avenue at Holton Lane. And there's a problem around rush hour in the evening there with people blocking the box, and it's habitual. It's not, it's not like, you know, one or two light cycles. It's like straight on from about four-thirty to five-thirty or six. And I know this because I've actually do this in two different directions. So I actually make three trips. So I get off the bus, and then I cross Holton Lane to go home and pick up a stroller, and then go pick up my children at their daycare on University Boulevard. So then I have two more trips, one round trip that I make from my house to that establishment and back. And so the issue is, is that everyone that is trying to get to University Boulevard is not being very conscientious or courteous to pedestrians and their other motorists that are trying to cross New Hampshire Avenue. So they pull out into the intersection hoping to get some leeway to move forward, and then it doesn't happen. And so they're not only, they block egress for me and my children to walk safely in the crosswalk across New Hampshire Avenue, but they also prevent people from trying to get into my neighborhood or turn left, as it were, sometimes to go southbound on six-fifty. So if you approach New Hampshire Avenue from Holton Lane going westbound, so that's from the city line in toward Six, you have two lanes, and the lane on the right is a right turn or straight way of passage, and the left lane is a left turn only. So I would recommend, my understanding is that Holton Lane is a city-owned street, so this is my plea, that the city council take this under consideration and perhaps the Public Works, I'm not sure how that conversation happens, but that maybe we redesignate the left lane of Holton Lane going westbound into New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood, a left turn and straight lane, and then the right lane a right turn only. Because that also backs up, because as I mentioned, people have already backed up all the way to University Boulevard, from University Boulevard to Holton because of the traffic. So the right turn lane people, because it's a, they can turn right on red, they could either sit and wait for the light if they've got a chance to go, or they could even turn when the traffic subsides, which it does sometimes. And the reason I bring this to your attention is that I was almost hit last week, as I mentioned earlier, but I was actually on the south side of the street, and someone was in the intersection, and they started backing up to move out of the way and almost hit me. And I was in the crosswalk, and then two weeks ago, I was with my children and couldn't get, couldn't walk in the crosswalk because people were blocking the box, even on the southbound lane, which is unusual. So that's my proposal, so please help.
And so that would essentially erase the straight-through arrow from the right lane and repaint it in the left lane?
Correct. And I can't recall if there's one overhead, there may be an overhead sign that needs to be replaced as well. So that's one issue. And another, well, I wasn't prepared tonight. That was my one issue that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, but maybe I'm done. Thank you for listening.
Sure.
If you're not, you can always come back up before the session is over.
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Cozel, Wildwood Drive, Ward Six, Tacoma Park, Montgomery County. Been there since Prince George's County. I'm never at a loss for words, I'll just keep talking till Barry's ready to come back.
Then I'll have to go to this.
That's okay too. Mr. Schultz did invite us to take a best shot. I'm not going to do that. You hear me in an aggressive fashion enough and have done in the past few months and probably will in forthcoming months, but tonight I think it's the time to be nice. I want to thank a great number by name of city staff, starting with, she's not here, bless her heart, Alana Blanchard, who has worked, I think tirelessly, to reach out to our ward, our community, which is individually impacted by this sector plan, and particularly on the urban design guidelines. Now, we hope that we can get some teeth in those urban design guidelines, because if not, then it's pointless. I'd like to ask Ms. Matthews if there's any remuneration for duplication of services, so we can get some money back from the county, because I know Alana and maybe Sarah Daines are doing a lot of work over park and planning, and I don't know how much of that should come out of my pocket in the city or the county, and we'll pay her either way, but, you know, anything to generate funds for the city, I would be in favor of. I also want to thank Darryl Braithwaite and the entire Public Works Department. Wildwood Drive has for decades been on the A-list for such things as snow removal, and we're getting a lot of attention lately on street cleaning. Almost every Friday when our trash is picked up, a couple hours later, here comes that street cleaning machine. I appreciate that, I appreciate the work on this Braithwaite and on her personnel. Let's see. Oh, I love Fred Schultz, too. I'm very glad that he's our city council representative. He's a good sort, and he eats locally, and that's helpful. He supports things locally, as does Barry Howard. I mean, between the two of them, I get dragged to all kinds of restaurants, which is very broadening, no pun intended there. Let's see, who else? Oh, on behalf of the Police Department. Notwithstanding the guy that tripped on the curb and got shot in the process, we have a pretty low crime rate over in Ward Six, and with our proximity to the major intersection, I think that's laudable. And so thank you to the chief and everybody on the Police Department. Now finally, I don't see anyone here tonight from our good commercial neighbors. I was hoping that maybe Erwin Mack or Neil Teague or someone from the CDA.
They were all here last week.
They were here last week. Well, I was hoping they'd come this week. Maybe they're watching on TV. If they are, boys, you know, I appreciate you being good corporate neighbors to us, and we have a long way to go with the sector planning. And now the only challenge I have for this illustrious council is, please, don't wait for the golden spike in railroad track of the purple line as a train. We have a purple line. It's called the Metrobus J-4 Express, the Metrobus C-2, the Metrobus C-4, the ride-on bus number fifteen, Prince George's County, the bus, I don't know what number it is. They all go back and forth on the avenue on University Boulevard in almost identical path to what the alleged proposed alignment is for the light rail. And I notice, and it's heart-sickening to me, that for the first time ever, the east side of New Hampshire Avenue has got about a twenty percent vacancy rate. In addition, the seventy-six seventy-six has a for lease sign up, and I'm really concerned about the interim between whatever is done at the county council in the next week or month and the advent of this light rail. You know, as a starter, there's no transit center. Now, I don't know why somebody in the state of Maryland can't remember the words eminent domain and just buy Taco Bell and build the bus stop, but notwithstanding, we have a need now, as a city, to invest whatever resources, whatever marketing strategies we can in that area. And I would support anything this council does to extend the life of the CDA, not for a Band-Aid year and a half, give it another twenty-five years. It's fine with me. They've been an asset to the community, and we do need them. Now Barry, are you ready to say anything else?
Sure.
Okay. See you later. Thank you.
And just to let you know, the CDA is requesting the two and a half years.
Oh, give it twenty-five.
That's what they want.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me a second bite of the apple here. There's a lot of activity going on on my street, and there's a few houses that have been flipped or in the process of doing that, and that's good. That's good for the real estate values. And one recently, I understand, it had a driveway at the stop sign. So this is, I consider it's a public safety issue, and from what I understand, they were allowed to pour a driveway on Wildwood Drive in exchange for closing off their driveway on Holton Lane, and that's where the, their driveway was at the stop sign. And they imparted this story to me, a conversation with the city engineer, that suggested that there were only two residents in Tacoma Park that had driveways at stop signs. So now they've eliminated one, is it possible to eliminate the last one? That's just a question, for possible follow-up. Another one was, I had spoke one time about signs on New Hampshire Avenue. There was a bill that was passed by the state that would allow us to enforce taking those down and maybe even fining people. When does that go into effect? Does anyone know that?
Probably July one.
Okay, yeah, that's what I suspected, but I didn't do my own follow-up on that one.
It's also possible it could be October one.
Because I continue to take them down myself, whether I'm authorized to do that or not, but.
October one.
October one.
You're referring to the paper signs for the auto.
The paper ones and then the corrugated plastic ones?
For the public, we understood what you're talking about.
Right. I also take little flyers off of the bus shelters. Oh, that's another issue. Bus shelters, some of them, the lights seem to be out in them, and so if I was McDonald's or Pixar or whoever is advertising, paying for advertising space there, that might concern me, because I may not be getting my fair share of advertising time when the lights are out, when it's dark outside. So the bus shelter at Holton is a bus shelter fifty-five, I believe. I think the light is out there, and then there's one up by, on Merrimack, which looks like it was never wired. There's actually loose wires hanging out there, you can see them, so.
Maybe we might take a.
Possible follow-up on that.
Is that something that would get followed up on from Public Works or Housing and Community Development or Police?
I think I'd have Barry call McDonald's.
Well, but it's the.
My office follows up on this.
Okay.
Okay. Tree protection is another one that's on my list here. There was a great deal of conversation about the tree ordinances here just a month and a half ago, which is all to the good, but I wonder what sort of follow-up we have as an educational program to sort of reach out to people, because I'm concerned that some of the neighbors in New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood of Ward Six may not be aware of what are tree protection ordinances, what are the limitations, or what they can do, because even just short of taking down a tree, there's been some people that are doing some quite liberal limbing up and pruning of some of their trees, which is above and beyond, I believe, the five percent of live wood that's allowed to be cut. So I just wonder what sort of educational outreach can be done there.
So maybe we could get a quick sense of that from the Public Works Director.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, now or after? I have one other issue.
Do the other one, and we can get him.
So just sort of to follow on with the thanks, thanks to Alana Blanchard for all of her hard work with the design guidelines work. That was three months of, you know, of meeting after meeting to try to put that thing together, and actually, we're now ahead of the curve, so I think that's fabulous. And then also hats off to Darryl Braithwaite with the sidewalks meetings, but not only just the meetings themselves, but getting the word out, and I think that's been handled fabulously. And so I remember at a previous meeting, perhaps back in February, Councilmember Clay was interested in having a one-pager, and I know that things may be different in Ward Two, but, and I'm not saying Ward Six is a model, but it is something. It's something we didn't have before, and there were things like, you know, the entire neighborhood, or the entire ward received mailers to announce the meetings, and then there were a series of meetings set up, and then also the streets that were affected by a particular meeting were also flier, so that, I don't know if that's a process that could be repeated in Ward Two, but that seems like, that was pretty good. In addition to all the online activities, so announcements on listservs, et cetera, et cetera, but I think that was, I think the outreach on that was fabulous in the way it should be done, so.
Good. Thank you.
That's it.
Maybe we can just get a quick sense from the Public Works Director about education and outreach on tree ordinance.
In general, we use the city newsletter for updating folks, you know, kind of an annual reminder about tree ordinance issues, and the city newsletter editor generally does a tree article at least once or twice a year. I don't know what the current schedule is, we've just recently been advertising for the bulk buy, so I can check in with the editor and see when the last issue was run and whether it's time again for a new one. We will be bringing, probably within the next month or so, to the council, the ordinance changes that were discussed previously in February, and so you'll be codifying those related to the preplanting credits that we worked out. So there'll be an opportunity through that process just to have some more discussion.
And it sounds like maybe after we get those codified, it's a good time to publicize and point out the changes.
We'll certainly want to advertise that and come up with, you know, advertising promotional campaign to let people know that there's a preplanting arrangement, and we'll be using the city website as well as the newsletter for those kinds of information and updates.
And I know the tree planting deadline just passed.
Yeah, May thirteenth was the ordering deadline. We allow people up to today.
Is that the only time during the year, or is there another one?
There's twice. There's one, there'll be one in the fall as well, there's a spring planting and a fall planting. The fall planting will have the additional opportunity, providing the funds are still available in the budget, for the city to subsidize a portion of that purchase price, so we'll be making that known as well.
Maybe it's a good chance to say what that arrangement is currently, so that people know.
I believe the proposal on the table is fifty dollars, that the city would contribute fifty dollars to the, usually it's just under two-hundred-dollar purchase for the planting. I don't know if there was increases, I know there had been discussion of increases to that amount.
I think it was going to stay at the fifty, so that it was one-fifty, because I think the deal that just had the deadline was that if you want to buy, if you want to purchase one of the bulk purchase trees, what you get is a two-inch caliper tree planted guaranteed for a year for a hundred and fifty dollars. That's a good price.
All right.
Thank you. Other comments, Ward Six?
Donna Victoria, Wildwood Drive, Ward Six. I am going to be Miss Happy Sunshine tonight. I know, I'm disappointing some of my fans.
That's why you want to be here.
But I thought that Ward Six night was a good time to not come here with a complaint or a specific issue in mind, since we've covered so many of those in the last couple of months for Ward Six. And just point out that I love living where I live. I've lived there since nineteen ninety-four. We built a kitchen, and then we built on again, and we fought, we fought many times about moving and decided we could get a bigger house in a quote-unquote "better" neighborhood, but we couldn't ask for better neighbors, we couldn't ask for more diversity. We couldn't ask for much except a more walkable neighborhood and walkable commerce. And that is why, two years ago, I volunteered to step in when there was a vacancy in my ward on the city council. That's why I've worked on the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Sector Plan, that's why I have either gone or brought, my husband into going to the Urban Design Guideline meetings, it's why I worked on the school redistricting plan, it's because we have a really great thing going in Ward Six, and I think that not just Ward Six, but usually people come in here when they don't like what's going on. And I don't think we hear enough about how nice it is to live in a place like where we live. My children are going to Whaling Terrace, they are learning Spanish, in fact, one of them is now at SSI and continuing in Spanish and becoming quite fluent in writing essays. Of course, Councilmember Snipper's constituents go to that school as a matter of course. I have been, I'm now doing my third term as treasurer of the PTA there. It is a school with a sixty-three percent farms rate. We have a very modest means community that we serve. Some of them Tacoma Park students, some of them just outside the city borders. We're losing our Title I funding this year, which is a shame, but they've decided we're not poor enough and raised the bar. We are working on that, and as a treasurer, I quite boldly try to redistribute the wealth. And here in Tacoma Park, I make no apologies, that the primary thing we do is try to raise money and fundraise from them that got, and use that money to equalize opportunity for after-school programs, extracurricular activities, for the many children for whom a twenty-dollar or forty-dollar fee is simply unaffordable. And I think we do a good job of that. I kind of wanted to say that because I also wanted to point out a few things about statistics. I just got back from Phoenix, spent five days at the American Association of Public Opinion Researchers Conference, a place where I feel very comfortable with my own geekiness, let me tell you. There's a lot of census people there, Pew Charitable Trust, a lot of people who devote a lot of time to getting the numbers right. And in hearing some of the questions people have had, I thought it might be instructive to brush everybody up on who actually lives in Ward Six. I also, in two thousand, served on the redistricting committee for the council seats you all serve in, and looked at the differences from nineteen ninety to two thousand, which were very interesting to me. Now I'm looking at the two thousand to two thousand ten data on who lives in Tacoma Park in general, but also in specifics, who lives in Ward Six. And what I looked at, I think would surprise someone, and I cannot get it down specifically to Ward Six, because I'm not serving on the redistricting committee, and somebody in the city has to put that numbers together. But the tract seven oh one seven point oh three more or less comprises all of Ward Six and a portion of Ward Two, the Long Branch Sligo Citizens Association. And when you look at that area, what has actually happened over the last two decades, in particular in the Ward Six area, is that we have seen it go from a majority African-American constituency, in nineteen ninety, I think it was forty-seven, forty-eight percent African-American, down to thirty-seven percent ten years ago, down to thirty percent today. And surprisingly, the numbers of Caucasians are up. Right now, the ward is about forty-one percent Caucasian, thirty percent African-American, thirteen percent Latino. That is less than the national average, which surprised the heck out of me, and it has actually been declining. Nine percent Asian, more than double the national average of Asian people, which doesn't get talked about very much here, and seven percent mixed race or other. The average house, single-family home in this area is four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. I will concur, I will readily concede, again, I cannot separate out, say it out, the neighborhood in Ward Two, and they consistently have more expensive houses, a little bit. I think that average is bumped up a little bit by that neighborhood, but not by a lot. And so when we're talking about affordable housing in the Tacoma-Langley Sector Plan or about issues of equity, I just want to point out that in the Langley, Tacoma-Langley Crossroads, those are huge issues that are utterly valid. The problem is that our sector plan is in the Montgomery County portion, which is completely in Ward Six, completely in this city, and the fact is that we don't have a lot of opportunities, either in the projected housing or in what exists, to provide the housing that people are talking about. When you look at the two census wards that are immediately adjacent to the city in Prince George's County, you leap to eighty-three percent Latino and eighty-eight percent Latino. Again, this diversity and the restaurants that we've been actively going back and forth on in the New Hampshire Gardens listserv to get people eating in the crossroads more often are why I live there. But I do think it's instructive to note that we have a largely built-out neighborhood of single-family homes, we have the Tenacity property where they already have chased out some people, but it's a predominantly African immigrant and Caribbean immigrant population in the rental properties. We now have people buying the condos, and I'm not sure what the breakdown is there. And the housing that we have to preserve is a fairly small strip of quad apartments in New Hampshire Gardens on the blocks immediately adjacent to the Safeway BF Sol property. I know it's not a Safeway, but we're just going to call it the Safeway property until we get our Trader Joe's. And I say this because I feel like sometimes if we talk about these things, people, any sort of suggestion of this is anti-immigrant or anti-Hispanic, and I hope that I've spent enough time working with the people in my community that you know that that's not the case, but I would like people to know the facts of who actually lives in the city of Tacoma Park. It's simply a very different population from what I think people assume when they don't spend a lot of time in the crossroads. That said, we welcome every single homeowner and renter who comes in, and I want to continue to live here. I just would like to have a walkable grocery store and a place where I can pick up my coffee, and it could begrudgingly be the Starbucks if we could get our sidewalk done. So I want to thank Darryl for all her hard work on that. I want to thank Sarah Daines for many of the things that she is helping us with, and in particular, Alana Blanchard, who has been so very patient in trying to explain to us all of the tangled web that is intra-government politics on this complicated sector plan. And to say that I am very concerned about the Prince George's County side and on equity issues and on affordable housing, but that in fact, there's so much more housing on the Prince George's side that unfortunately, we're sort of spectators to the big argument that's going on. But I am committed to being that spectator and being there when I can be. Thanks for listening, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else from Ward Six?
The rule is you can't leave until you've made a speech. No, I'm kidding.
Okay. Well, thank you all, and some very helpful and informative comments, and some people have added things to their lists, and thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
And we will take a very short break, and then we will come back for our regular meeting. And we will take a very short break, and then we will come back for our regular meeting. There are no additional agenda items, and I'll give an agenda scheduling update. Next Monday, May 23, we're going to have closed session discussions, legal advice about Washington Adventist Hospital certificate of need, and the 410 State Highway Administration proposal. My sense is that we will have public sessions on both of those items, but I didn't want to schedule those public sessions yet until we've had the legal advice in closed session so we know where we need to go with that. But those items will show up on regular meeting agendas. The following Monday, May 30, is Memorial Day. The city will be closed. We'll have our meeting on Tuesday, the 31st. And a reminder that we're going to have a presentation on the use of cable equipment funds and the Comcast franchise agreement, which is going to be coming up for renewal soon. And we'll have a presentation from the Emergency Preparedness Committee and discussion with Monday, June 13, we have work session discussions, one about MML legislative action requests. That's another reminder for my colleagues to think about if there are any things that we want to submit for consideration by MML next year for state legislation. We might also use that opportunity to discuss how we want to go about, if we want to go back with the bill that we had this year, and how we might want to do that. And also a discussion regarding city council interaction with city committees. Monday, June 20, is the last ward night of the current cycle of ward nights, and that'll be Ward two night. And then finally, Monday, June 27, that week there will be no city council meeting, since many from council will be at the Maryland Municipal League Convention. And that takes us up to Fort Gillette. Next item on the agenda is public comment period. If there's anybody who isn't from Ward six who wants to make comments. Mr. Lovas?
Yeah, my name is Pat Lovas, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your favorite peace delegate. I want to thank the people from Ward six for bringing out some non-sugary treats tonight, like the samosa and the fritters. I want to thank you people very much for this, because us diabetics probably appreciate that. I appreciate that, I want to let you know. And also, I'd like to know if you guys could put out, on the ward nights, if you guys could put out packets, different packets, for voter registration kits, so that if people are not registered to vote, they can register to vote, or they can take some home to their neighbors and family and friends who are not registered yet. And also, I want to encourage everybody who's about to turn 18. I'm not turning 18, I'm turning 56. But I want to tell everybody who's about to turn 18, it's never too early to register to vote, because our election is coming up in November, and between now and November, time is going to go by quick during the summer. And before you realize it, you will have not registered again this year. I want to see as many people registered to vote, about to come on out and vote. And I'd like to see as many people coming out on Ward two night as we can get out, and bring the children out, too, to see what they're, how the city's affecting them, how their schools are affecting them. You know, drugs, gangs, bullies, whatever they want to talk about, whatever they want to, problem they want to address, I'd like to see them come out. Because we can't know what's going on if they don't tell us. You know, I think they should be encouraged to come out and tell us. And also, also, I'd like to thank the city council for everything they've done for our city so far, and what they've done for me, because they've done a lot. And I'd like, and by the, and one way to show your thanks for your city is to register to vote, get out there and vote, vote for the best one you can. You can't, if you don't vote, you can't complain. You can't complain, you can't do anything, you're just a bump on the log. And I'd like to see more people coming out to the ward nights to show your appreciation for what we're doing, and also to, if there's any complaints they have or any problems they want to address, come on out in the dressing room. That's your night. The ward night is your night to come out and address our city council. So they should come on out and be encouraged to come on out. Anyone out there who's watching this, please, bring your teenagers, bring everybody out. This is your night. Ward night is your night. So come on out and do this. And don't forget, register to vote. Every kid who's turning 18 should have a voting registration kit in his birthday package. Thank you very much for letting me share. Please, listen and get out and vote, and register.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has any public comment? So then we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Clay, I think I saw you push your button, but the light didn't light.
Why did you pay for this system?
Well, forty fingers there.
Hmm, I think they paid a lot for my, more for my finger than we probably paid for these. So I have several comments tonight. First one is that Tacoma Park Folk Festival is having a fundraiser tomorrow night at El Golfo. El Golfo is one of my favorite places to go on the East Coast, because it's probably the restaurant that most reminds me of being in California, because I love Mexican food. So the fundraiser is from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., but at 7:00, we are going to have some entertainment for you. Scott Holland, Beth Ronaldo, and Mark Sylvester, longtime affiliated with the Folk Festival, terrific musicians, are going to be playing at 7:00. So I hope folks will come and join us. I believe that it's dine-in or take-out, but the music starts at 7:00, and I think that's going to be a really terrific time. While the Public Works Director is here, I had another request from the people at 500 Elm, you know, where the water streams down along Millwood Avenue. And I've noticed that they've got sandbags and things there. And I think when we last left, they thought that the city engineer was going to connect with them, and that hasn't happened. So I was hoping you could ask them to talk to them about their unusual structural driveway water challenges that they have at their house. I've been notified by one of my constituents tonight that on Bike to Work Day, they will in fact be riding their bicycles on Ethan Allen with their toddlers in their bike trailers. So hopefully, we'll have some better conditions on Ethan Allen by Bike to Work Day. One of the reasons why they said that they don't think it's realistic to ride on the sidewalk is because one of the things that happens on Thursdays on Ethan Allen, and I have experienced this, is that people put their trash in the recycling on the sidewalk. And so frequently, the sidewalk is impassable for walkers and bicyclists on Trash Day. So, you know, maybe we could think of a solution for that, like having that be, I don't know, I imagine they already, they must already pick it up early. Do they pick it up early or do they pick it up after 9:30?
I don't know.
But, you know, maybe we could put them at the beginning or something so that we could get this off and then drop it back. Well, you could push the empty containers back onto the property or something. Anyway, we should probably think about that, because it does in fact block the sidewalk. There's been some complaints about aggressive drivers in the ward, and the police have been responsive, and I really appreciate that. We had some aggressive driving at Jackson and Flower, had some aggressive driving at Prince George's and Circle. I just tried to come up Maple at Tulip and turn left with my turn signal on, and was rewarded with wild gestures through the front windshield for, and I was there first. But boy, the hostility level, driving around town, seems to be up a little bit, and I don't know what that is. But one of the things that's being talked about is actually reducing the speed limit in some of the areas to 15 to 20 miles an hour on the smaller side residential streets. We don't ticket people until they're going significantly over the speed limit anyway, and particularly on a street like Flower in particular, you know, 30 miles an hour, which is the speed limit unless it's posted, on Flower Avenue, seems like 90, because the street is 18 feet wide. We're still waiting for an answer on the woodland trees, about whether or not they could do something with them. If we could just get an answer, whatever it is, so that I could give it to them and we don't have that holding open anymore, that would be terrific. The police also responded, there was a call about the flea market at the corner of Jackson and Ethan Allen. It's also continuing to be used by Washington Gas and WSSC as a staging area for the utility activities. It is a residential property, they're not supposed to use it for that. We've been through this over and over again. I called Valerie Urban's office and sent them an email last week again, and haven't received a response from them. So I'm going to keep following up on that. I know it's a challenge, because it's a zoning issue and it's difficult to deal with, but it's really annoying to the neighbors. The police checked that there was no flea market this weekend, so we should watch for that, because last time it was sort of repeated and we had to keep dogging them about it. We do have a schedule for the Ward two Sasquatch sidewalks. We thought we were going to be able to do it in May. It looks like it's going to be the first week of June, and we're going to get that information out to the constituents right away. And for the Monday, June 20, Ward two night, I'm actually going to be collecting information from people in my ward about volunteers that they know of in the ward, because that's a little thing I'd like to do for some of my volunteers. But I don't actually know all the volunteers who are in But I don't actually know all the volunteers who are in the ward, so I'm going to be asking people to help me out to identify who some of our stellar volunteers are. Sometimes I'm surprised to learn of all of the things that people in Tacoma Park are doing, so I'd like to hear more about that. And the last thing I'm going to say is about the Recreation Department. We are losing our longtime Recreation Department Director, and one of the things that some of the council members have talked about is taking an opportunity to reflect on what's happening with the Recreation Department now. We've got, you know, lots of, got lots of interesting new programming that's going on, we've got a lot of things happening with the teen coordinator, we have all kinds of lively things going on with the seniors, senior folks and interesting things, and we'd like to, several of us would like to have an opportunity to talk about the direction of the Recreation Department and kind of, so where we go from here. And so one of the things that we talked about was maybe waiting to hire the new Rec Director until we could have a conversation about that with the council and the Recreation Committee.
Thank you, I just want to, I know sometimes it can be not clear when one council member mentions something, but I totally support Councilmember Clay's idea, and I know that other council members also are supportive of that discussion approach. Just want to give a quick update on Eco Park. So Eco Park is the name of the development at the corner of Maple and Carroll Avenue. I went to a presentation by the architect and developer for that lot. They, it is true that they've purchased the lot next to it, which is the PMI parking lot between the 7-Eleven and the Eco Park lot, and they're in the process of going before the Planning Board for Review and the DC Historic Preservation Review Board. Now, this is all in DC, so it's not a Maryland property, but it's something I think that many of us care a great deal about because it's a bust basically, Maryland, and many, many people walk by, three-foot sidewalk on the way to the metro, trying to avoid getting poked by the chain link fence and not step in the street and also observe a pretty significant eyesore. So the good news supposedly, I know we've heard this many times before, and even one of our own city reporters for the city newsletter talked to them last fall, and we got a report that they were going to start last October, that obviously didn't happen. I very much pressed them at this meeting, and they said, in the middle of June, they're going to break ground on the existing Eco Park site, that that plan has been approved already, there's nothing to add to that plan. So I'm cautiously optimistic, they do have a real developer engaged. I think one of the challenges is the architect who actually owns the property is not a developer himself, but is more architect. So they have a developer named Level Two Developer that's engaged, and they've developed significant projects in DC, so I think that's exciting. I think there's some questions in the community about the details of the, what would go on the PMI lot. I don't think anyone, I've not heard anyone opposed to development being there, but I think it's a matter of some details about how far back are the sidewalk setbacks, how big is the massing and scale of the building. So those are, I think, all things to consider, but generally, I think, I'm hopeful those things will be worked out, and that could also be approved, and that would be built as well. And the idea and the plan they have now is that the two buildings would be connected by some sort of walkway or retail space so that there would be a continuous storefront. Second item I just want to mention is this Pepco Smart Meter notice that we got, that Pepco's going to be installing smart meters around the city. I think it might make sense for us to put out a notice on the public safety communications vehicle that we have, that Kathy Plevey has, because there's some very clear information there about the people that will be doing the contracting so that there's nobody who falls victim to someone posing as one of these smart meter individuals. Next, I would really like it if we could have a substantive conversation, I think that should be probably a public conversation with Washington Gas. Washington Gas has been absolutely horrible on Ethan Allen Avenue, I think as actually the contractor there has actually directly lied to residents about some of the conversations with the city that just were flat-out false. And my understanding is that Washington Gas is looking to go to other places in the city beyond Ethan Allen Avenue. I don't know all the locations, I don't know the plan. I've gotten some information, thanks to Councilmember Clay, that some of it's going to be in Ward One, but I'm sure other council members would want to know if it was going to be in their ward, and if that level of street tear-up is going to happen. I think it would be important for us to really understand what's going on and also have a way to hold the contractor accountable because it doesn't seem like that Washington Gas contract with the contractor does. Trying to be real quick on two last things. One is, just want to be very clear to people, as Bruce stated, on the 23rd, we are only getting legal advice about 410, and the letter we received from the State Highway Authority, we're not making any decisions in that meeting, there are going to be other public meetings. I got a request to hold a public Ward One meeting before that meeting even took place. I think that's just premature because the, that meeting is really for us to understand what the letter says and understand what the legal, what the options are. There'll be other opportunities for legal input. And then lastly, I'm contemplating bringing forward, which I'd like to work with other council members on, a resolution related to immigration. There's a lot that's been happening related to immigration recently. The County Council passed something in opposition to something called Secure Communities, which is basically an unfunded mandate by the federal government to get local police to force, enforce immigration laws and ignore what's best for public safety. There's been, again, a push to have comprehensive immigration reform, which is what I think we actually need. And then also, there's a big push now to sign up and petition people to put the Dream Act, the Maryland Dream Act, on a ballot. So I think it would be wise for us to, as a city, take a stand on some of those immigration issues, and I will try and put something together and get my council members' reactions, fellow council members' reactions.
And I see that you got the B-sheet immigration piece that I said that's rolled up there, should please.
Oh, yes.
That's the, I provided that, I thought it was very informative about immigration.
Well, you're the source.
I'm the source for that.
Okay.
Councilmember Schultz.
Couple of small things. One thing is that when we get these salmon cover sheets for revisions to previously distributed items for our agenda, this is a question, not a, not a direction or anything like that. Would it be possible when we, because there's changes or amendments, to highlight what those changes are like you would if you were tracking a document that's being edited? Because like the one tonight is, I mean, I think I figured it out, what the changes are, but it would help if that, if that would be the case. Another thing that was on, I wondered, direct towards our Director of Public Works, has to do with the, the street sweeping. You had earlier, Daryl, had said last winter that once the city got its new street sweeper, you're going to be able to advertise the schedule such that residents in all wards would be able to know what days the street sweeper was definitely going to be working in a particular ward or district or however you divide up the city in your, in your department. And I'm just wondering if that, if you're ready to do that, because I, I noticed that what happens is that in my particular area, the street sweeper comes on Friday, which is the same day the trash collection is. And that makes, makes sense because then the street sweeper can follow the trash collection. The problem is, is that the trash collection crews often leave the cans in the side, in the pavement, instead of putting them up on the curb or out of the way of the street sweeper. So the street sweeper has to angle around these, these empty cans, or if they haven't gotten to them in the, in, you know, literally, the street sweeper gets there first, residents put their cans, you know, off, off the curb, onto the pavement, which also kind of results in the same outcome. So does it make sense to do the street sweeping on a different day than the collecting? And maybe it doesn't make any sense, there probably is a darn good reason why you do it the way you do, because usually you do have good reasons for the things you do. But it just, and as you know, the advantage of at least getting this thing advertised and regularized is that then we can all make an effort to inform folks that this is a good evening for you to put your car on the side of the street that you don't normally park it on. That way, at least occasionally, certain areas will get swept that almost never, ever get swept for months and months on end because people have their cars parked always in the same spots on most days of the week. So is that, that's sort of in the form of a question, if I may.
Based on the discussion that we had during the budget discussion on that topic, I've been in contact with the newsletter editor, we had had it planned for the June issue, but she's not going to have space, so it now looks like the July issue, but there'll be an upcoming issue that'll show the zones and give the information about our street sweeping program with some data about why we do it and what the benefit is. So that'll be coming up a little later in the, in the summer.
Okay, good.
In terms of why we do what we do, it's like one of those things, it's because that's the way the rap sheets were when they were handed to me from my predecessor. So I can talk to the supervisors, I think it has to do with, you know, we've got zones one through five, and there's Monday through Friday, and Monday's one, Tuesday's two, Wednesday's three, it just works out that way. But I can discuss that with them, see if they would like to make any changes, and if they're finding a problem in terms of the, you know, movement around the trash trucks.
Yeah, I think it would help.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. These are really two items for residents of Ward Five, just to alert folks who maybe don't know about it, things going on. One is that the residents near the hospital and some of the commercial areas in Ward Five are exploring permit parking to deal with the issue of folks in the hospital and folks who work in these commercial areas parking on the streets all day. There's a number of residents who do not have any other place to park but the street, and as a result, they, they might leave in the morning to drop off their kids or something like that, and then come back, and there's no place for them to park. So there's been some talk in the, in these neighborhoods about how permit parking would work and whether it's a good idea or not, or maybe there's other solutions. Just wanted to alert residents in Ward Five about that. And the second thing is that some residents near Erie and Flower have been concerned about the construction of a very large structure on a commercial property, and this property does not have, as near as we can tell, a permit to build this. And the residents are concerned that the county seems very lax about enforcing construction rules. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Clay has a brief comment on something.
I just want to say that this week I got the same call from some folks in Ward Two about the hospital and the permits, so we might want to.
Yes.
Or that together.
It's the same issue.
Yes.
Right, it is.
Exactly.
Yeah, great, excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I also think that taking a little, taking a little time when a department head leaves to evaluate what's good for that department, maybe through a citizen group like the Rec Department, or Rec Committee, I think that's a good idea, it gives us a little breathing room, and so I support that notion. I have a resident who, this is kind of a funny story, there's this homeowner's tax credit, I think it's called, for property tax, where you get a certain amount off if you live in your home. And she's been assessed that, she's not been a recipient of that for some time. And, and the reason is that she has a post office box in the District of Columbia from when she first moved into her house and it was just built, and there was, it wasn't clear what the address was going to be, she's kept the PO box. And, and so her, even though she lives in the house in Tacoma Park, her address is outside of Tacoma Park. I thought I'd just pass that on as a kind of an anomalous situation. I want to note that Pinecrest neighborhood in my ward had a meeting last week, and it went very well, and there was a focus group, which I thought was very informative and well, well-laid out. I want to put my, I want to tip my hat to Ms. Danes in her work to get the Sycamore, the house on Sycamore in good, in good standing, where everyone's standing around with fingers crossed about whether a, a deal will be made. I'll say it publicly now, although I don't think it's been penned, it's looking like it'll go through, and that house, which has been in state of disrepair for many, many years, is, we hope, will have a breath of life. And finally, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to get a sense of where Washington, Washington Gas is going to be doing its work in my ward. We have to work with them because them doing work means that that, those gas lines are being repaired, and that's, that's good, because our gas lines are old, as well as our water line. So I'm glad that they're working, but they got to toe the line and clean up after themselves as they go, so that's all.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to voice support for a couple of the, my colleagues' comments tonight. Mr. Schultz's suggestion on the salmon sheet, that the changes be marked on there, would be very helpful, especially because we usually get the salmon sheet right as the meeting's starting, and so sometimes it's hard to read that while the meeting's going on. And then I also certainly support Councilmember Clay's suggestion about the hiring of the new Rec Director. I think we've had a lot of discussions about what we'd like to see in the Rec Department, and there's some questions left on the table with that. And so I think it would be a great opportunity for us to be more directive to the Recreation Committee on, on providing this council with some recommendations for what we'd like to see in the department. And that's all, thank you.
Okay. I had the opportunity to attend a very nice celebration at the Tacoma Park Corporate of Nursery School on Saturday. And it was a real nice opportunity to get to see about 100 folks who were there for an opportunity to dedicate some artwork that I didn't get to see because it was raining when I got there, and to dedicate their new teahouse that parent volunteers had built, and also to burn their mortgage, since they had paid off the mortgage in the, in the building that they bought 10 years ago and renovated, and they have continuing projects there. But it was also interesting to be reminded that the Tacoma Park Corporate of Nursery School has been in existence since 1946.
Mrs. Kay, who's a big.
So I was very happy to be there and help them celebrate. With the talk about Washington Gas and the more usual suspect of WSSC, I did want to just say that it's nice to have an opportunity to praise WSSC in the work that they've been doing on, in the 7500 block of Carroll Avenue. I think I dreaded seeing that coming, and my, my experience of it so far in the maybe two weeks that they've been working there, is that it has gone pretty smoothly, it appears to be going fairly quickly, the repairs happen as they should, the road gets paved every day. At the end, there was one metal plate there that I saw today, but there were rainstorms, thunderstorms today that might have caused that. But I've had the oppor, that's right around the corner from where I live, and I go through there a number of times during the day, and I've always got through there quickly. there a number of times during the day, and I've always got through there quickly. They've been very courteous. They've never had anything intruding over into the lane that is always open on Carroll Avenue. They have a man with a, with a broom there, and as soon as the machinery comes across into that lane to move, to do some work, there's immediately somebody behind it with a broom, just like somebody going behind a police on a horse, you know? Getting anything that's over in the travel lane, back over out of the travel lane where it shouldn't be. So I just wanted to give some praise, for once, to WSSC. I think they're doing a terrific job on that project.
Send them over to Ethan Allen, they just clean up over there when they're done.
I also wanted to remind my colleagues that this week is MML Montgomery County Chapter Meeting Thursday night in Chevy Chase Village, and it's elections. And somebody you know is up for president.
Oh.
So.
Hmm.
Me?
Does that person want to be president?
Tonight? The elections are tonight?
No, 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 Thursday night.
Does that person want to be president?
Yes. So, and it's, so it's relatively close, unlike last month in Poolsville. This one is Chevy Chase Village, so it's close by. And finally, I just wanted to comment on a couple of my colleagues' comments on Councilmember Clay's suggestion about having something scheduled for the council to talk with the Recreation Committee. I think that's fine for us to do. I do want to remind my colleagues that we can talk to the Recreation Committee, but the, it's the city manager's job to hire the Recreation Director. If we have questions with the, that the city manager might have, or we have questions for the city manager about those things, I think we're perfectly free and capable of asking her those things. But just a reminder that it's basically her hire. But I, but I welcome the opportunity for us to have a discussion with the Recreation Committee and ourselves about things that we want to talk about in terms of directions for recreation in the city. And I think that's it for council comments. Does the city manager have any comments?
Just a few items this evening. Just wanted to note for the record that the quarterly financial report for March 31st is in your packet. Obviously, it's a little later than usual because of the budget. Won't spend any time talking about it, because I think we've probably been talking enough about numbers for the past six to seven weeks, but I did just want to note that is in your packet. Also, just wanted to share with the council that last week I did sign off on change order number six on the public works renovation. The total net change of that change order was $5,667. Kind of the same issues that you all have heard about before, some unsuitable soils, more of those darn old foundations that we found as we were digging. And there was, as I mentioned, I think a couple of weeks ago, there was, when they started doing some roof work, it was not a total roof replacement in the project, but they did find some wood rot, and so there was a little bit more work that was needed relative to the roofs. There was an offsetting credit that kept the amount down. Really, the biggest thing, I think, in terms of the project is just we still have some site work, so obviously, since we've already found some unsuitable soils and some of these old foundation footers, we're not sure what we'll find going forward. But all in all, I think the project's still going very well, and I think we're on track to still be done in early August. So. While Daryl is here, I thought I might just take the opportunity to have her come up and just give you all an update on the construction on Ethan Allen.
Yeah, we've been meeting with Washington Gas folks, the project manager, as well as some of their other internal folks. We have a schedule that they developed for completion of the gas line replacement project. They anticipate being completed this week. They're scheduled to be finished May 22nd. Of course, that date was selected before we had the torrential rains forecast for this week, so unless something different happens with the weather, I, I'm anxious that they won't be able to meet that schedule that they had set, because when it rains, they will close down the site and leave. They won't continue to work in the rain. As of last Friday, they had six remaining house connections to hook up. They had a total of 19, I believe, for the total project. And the first part of the work involved laying down the gas main, a new gas main, and the more time-consuming part of the work had to do with connecting each house that had gas service. So that continues, and we hope that the weather won't impede their ability to finish those last six connections. When they do have metal plates on the street now, it's over those house connections, and there either has been a difficulty with the connection, or some other problem that's resulted in them not refilling and removing the plates. The plan at this point was for them to be completed by the 20th, the end of this week. On the 23rd, which is Monday, we were going to walk the site with the restoration folks from Washington Gas. The people that do the street restoration is a different office within Washington Gas than the folks that do the actual gas line replacement. So we made a, it a very big deal to Washington Gas that they needed to have those two offices coordinate and schedule one behind the other. That has been a problem in the past, where the resurfacing doesn't happen on a timely basis. So they are scheduled to do the resurfacing of Ethan Allen over their area where they've done contract work from curb to curb, even though their work was primarily in one lane of the road. We've required that they replace curb to curb the street surface, so that'll take place from Jackson to Prince George's Avenue, a little bit beyond. You can see the marks on the street now where they've cursory gone out with their paving contractor and identified the limits of work. We'll also be identifying any concrete work that needs to be done. If there was sidewalk that was damaged, or curb work that was damaged, that would also be replaced prior to the milling and paving of the road. So that's supposed to be completed in a two-week timeframe. Again, this is all weather-dependent. One of the things that we've required of them in the street, when they did the saw cut of the trench below the pavement, is a significant amount of concrete subbase, eight to 10 inches of concrete. That's one of the reasons why, though you might not think so looking at it lately, but that's one of the reasons the street is held up as well as it has for the age that it is carrying the traffic that it does. It's been an absolute requirement of ours that they replace that concrete subbase, and they use rebar to connect it to the existing concrete structure below the ground. Because of our requirement, they're going to have to, and we're still working with them on the details, but at this point, the way it looks, they will want to do that concrete subbase pour all in one day. We'll probably detour that one lane of traffic going west-eastbound for the day that they do that concrete pour. The concrete is, will require a curing period of at least 24 hours, potentially more, depending on the type of concrete they use. So we'll have to have steel plates over the entire trench between that block for the period of time that the concrete cures before they put down the pavement. So it's, it's information that we're trying to figure out how best to get to the residents. I know there's been a lot of discussion about steel plate issues. This is a steel plate issue that's, there's no other way around it. We're, we're, we've been absolute with the requirement of a concrete subbase, and in order to meet our requirement, which we think is best for the long-term maintenance of that road, it's going to require steel plates to cover it. Like with anything, there's ways that you can put down steel plates that works very well and ways that you can't, so we've been impressing upon the paving folks that we need to have this work as well as possible, and we've been making ourselves available to work with them on a detour plan, signage plan, notification plan. So we're hoping that this progresses like it's been talked about. But we'll keep you updated as anything changes. I guess the first phase will be to see whether they're completed by Friday this week, and if not, that'll start altering the schedule. But then we anticipate within two weeks after the completion this week, provided it stays on schedule, the road will be milled and paved, and Washington Gas will be gone from Ethan Allen Avenue. I did also want to take a moment to talk about their next project. As you noted, the gas lines in Tacoma Park are particularly old. Part of the work they were doing on 7500 block of Carroll Avenue, WSSC, they uncovered a failing gas line that was pressurized with gas. It was just crumbling and decomposed, and that was the big to-do last week, where they had to have an immediate, emergency detour of the traffic when they exposed a failing gas line. So the gas lines within the city are of an age where they are requiring replacement. They have developed a replacement schedule. We know only what their next project is. They haven't told us what, you know, what their five, 10-year-out projects lined up to be. A part of the reason, or part of the way they identify those is based on maintenance calls. They have a lot of maintenance calls for gas leaks and gas problems, which was one of the reasons why they were on Ethan Allen. There was years of history of gas leaks and repairs that they did on Ethan Allen Avenue. The area where they're planning to move to next is, I think, entirely within Ward One, Josh, so you won't be happy to hear that, but it will include Valley View Avenue, Spruce Avenue, Willow Avenue, Maple Avenue, and Tulip Avenue between Maple and Spruce. The project will start on Carroll Street in the district by the metro, go down Willow Avenue, and continue. One of the things we've been talking to Washington Gas about in meetings is the requirement that they have a public forum where they let people know why they're doing this, what they're doing, and what they, they can anticipate. In this particular project, what they're talking about at this point, and I hate to speak for Washington Gas, because I've done this before on the Ethan Allen project, and you all heard me say they were going to bore, and then they trench cut the street, so I'm only as good as the information they provide. They aren't planning on doing any major trench work for this project. They have four-inch and six-inch existing gas lines under the street. Their intention is to put a, a two-inch flexible pipe in the existing gas lines. So they're not planning at this point to trench cut like they did on Ethan Allen Avenue. What they're planning to do is open up a four-by-six section at one point, go 100 feet or so away, dig another four-by-six hole, and pull a line between the two. Once they get that line pulled and the existing line, then the more time-consuming work, like with any project, is they have to go to each individual house and make the house connection at the replaced line. This project will also include, it's about 50/50, there will be some house connections to the gas line that need to be replaced in their entirety. They're galvanized, they're old, they're, they're no longer ones that should be safely left in the ground. So there's some where they're going to be replacing the entire service up to the house. There's others that have been replaced due to renovations and other work on the house that they don't need to have a, a changeover. So in those cases, all they're going to be doing is connecting them to the existing new gas line. There's also a need for some of the properties to bring the gas meter from the inside of the house to the outside of the house, so they'll be making that transition then. We're looking at the first week of June for a meeting. We've suggested that they use the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church, and I've offered to make the contacts for them with the church, seeing it was close and local and right in the neighborhood in which that work is being suggested. They're very anxious to get started on this project. One of the requirements that the city has had is we have told them that we can't give them a permit for the new work until they've completed the Ethan Allen project. That has caused a lot of heartburn up and down the chain in Washington Gas. But based on conversations I've had, I, I think that was probably something that you all support. So we're working with them to try to figure out what the timeframe will be. Hopefully, the public meeting will be in June. They're willing to come to the council and, and have a discussion with you all. I told them I thought the priority would get, be to get the public information gathered, and if there was a more general meeting that you wanted to have with Washington Gas, like we've had with WSSC, we could invite them to a council meeting. So that's about as much as I know of the upcoming work with Washington Gas. It will be a eight-to-10-month project, so it'll be a very long, very slow, very arduous project, one that nobody is looking forward to, but one that is in the best interest of the city, the best interest of the residents, and is trying to address a failing infrastructure related to the gas lines.
And I think at least two colleagues have questions. Councilmember Clay and Councilmember Wright.
I just want to say, I relish the idea of you bringing the Washington Gas people to the council chamber. You might want to ask them to bring their flame retardant suits. On this cool new camera, camera phone that I have that I'm still trying to figure out how to operate, I went out and I took pictures of the cars on Ethan Allen this week, and I may have some tips for you, Josh. I think I'm, actually, I'm going to set up a YouTube site, and I'm going to go take some more video and put it up on the YouTube site and start sending it around the city of Tacoma Park, and maybe we could add the Pepco trees and stuff, and we could have sort of a public utilities thing, and start putting some Tacoma Park pressure on the Public Utilities Commission to do something so that we could actually get some meaningful performance issues related to the contracts. It's appalling to think that, once they've started, and this is the problem, once they've started, your only choice is to pull the contract and have them stop in the middle. There's no, they have this long-term contract with this group that, that has, essentially, they have no ability to stop it, they have no ability to hold them accountable, there's no performance measure in it at all, and it's this one contractor for the entire area. And so, in spite of this guy essentially lying to the constituents, the next day I went out there and asked where he was at, and he was, he was sitting there right on the, on the little line, what you call it, the backhoe bobcat thingy that digs up the street and makes everybody mad. And I said, "That's Sid," and he just, he just laughed at me. I mean, he's no accountability at all. So that's what you can look forward to, and my impression, actually, since we've been even, so more aggressive with them, is that the street condition has actually gotten worse. They promised they wouldn't leave plates over the weekend, there were plates there again all weekend, there were nine plates there all weekend. Their word is just completely worthless. So it really encourages you, because we were kind of stuck once we started. I mean, there's not a lot we can do, because our only power is to pull the permit and then leave us there with this crappy street. So whatever you can do to align things beforehand and might be worthwhile. I don't know if it's possible to just do street by street so that they can't rip up all of Ward One at the same time, and maybe they can only destroy the lives of people on one street at a time. But we really need to strategize about how to deal with them, given this, this issue, and we need to go back to our, our state, our state folks about how to deal with this status as a public utility, and, and get help from our state delegates, and get help from our resident who's the comptroller, who sits on the Public Utilities Commission, and see, you know, how they're going to, how they're going to deal with this. Because, you know, to me, besides the fact that this has been a horrible pain in the neck for everybody in Ethan Allen, and it's been, it's been dangerous and, and crazy, it is an incredible waste of money and resources to our community, not only through the gas bills that we pay, but I gave $2,000 to Bob's BMW this week to have the front fork seals replaced on my motorcycle, and it has 5,800 miles on it. That is a road condition problem. I paid about $4,000 worth of damage to my, my giant SUV. Everyone thinks that I have it all better because, you know, I drive this giant SUV, and that somehow I'm not affected by the road damage, but, you know, $4,000 worth of damage to my vehicle from being, being shook. So it's not just, it's not just the streets, it's, you know, there's, there's this whole bigger picture to it, and I really think that the state needs, needs to engage, and there's no reason for it to be like this. And, and thanks to Daryl for beating her head against the, the brick wall that is, you know, this whole Washington Gas, and sometimes WSSC, although that seems to be getting better, but this whole Washington Gas, U L S, contract misery that it is, I, I really don't envy the position that it puts you in to have to deal with that and have, you know, I get people yelling, I know that people are calling and yelling at you about things that are inexplicably beyond our ability to do something about it here at the, at the local, at the local level. So we need to get some, some big guns.
You have to tell us how you really feel about it.
I, I do want to say that we will be providing permit with conditions, and what we're trying to do, based on what we know about the project upcoming, is kind of troubleshoot out and think about what we want to do. One of the requirements that we've put out and they've agreed to is, usually what they do is they do the entire project, and then they come in and do the restoration. So we've got them agree, to agree to not do the entire project and then do the restoration, but they're going to have to do portions of the restoration once they finish the street, for instance. Once they finish Spruce Avenue and Valley View, they need to come in and restore those, and then as they go on to Tulip and Willow. So we are trying to troubleshoot with them what we think are going to be the bigger problems based on past experience. We haven't had a project like this, if it continues to go as it's been designed with, you know, inserting the line in the existing pipe. So some of it's going to be all-new to us in terms of what to expect. We're trying to get as much information from them as we can. The other thing that's going to be crucial and really critical is because of the interface between the public and the, and the contractor, I mean, the contractor's going to have to between the public and the contractor, I mean, the contractor's going to have to be in a person's house two, maybe three times. So there's going to be an incredible amount of cooperation and coordination that needs to happen, and you can anticipate the difficulty if they, you know, can't get in a house or are trying to move off a block, and they've got three people that are never home when they say they're going to be home so they can get in. So that's one of the things we're hoping to accomplish in the public meeting, is that people understand, excuse me, that there's a lot of coordination that has to happen and cooperation, and, you know, we certainly hope that this project will go much different. It's a really a night-and-day, apples-and-orange kind of project from the one they did on Ethan Allen Avenue, and I think that they've certainly felt like they've been put in the ring, or at least the Washington Gas folks, from not only us but others in the state that have communicated their dissatisfaction with them on a political, on a political level. But we're hoping that we can start getting the information out and getting the communication going so people have a sense of what's coming.
And is there any, I have a couple of questions on some statements. One is, I'm just curious, is there any upgrade, like is this a high-pressure gas line as opposed to low-pressure gas line?
The existing is a low pressure. They didn't call this a high pressure. It's kind of a mid-pressure. I don't know what the difference is, but it's not a high-pressure line, but it's basically, the pressure has to do with the load and what, you know, how long a run it is and what the load is, so it's a mid-pressure, medium-pressure line.
I know one of the benefits of a high-pressure gas line is that it makes it much easier to put a generator into your house that runs on gas, so you can deal with the fact that Pepco doesn't keep your electricity on, so one upgrade might help. But I would suggest a couple of things I think that would be helpful. One is that-
When we have that public meeting, we invite the state representatives to it because two of the state representatives, one of them actually lives basically on Tulip, you know, Tulip and Maple, Heather Mesur, so she's going to be affected, obviously, and then, did you say that Holly is one of the streets or no?
No, not Holly. They're stopping at Maple. This particular project stops at Maple.
Okay. The second thing is I really do think we should do parsed permits. So basically, they get a permit for X road, and when they finish that work successfully, then they get the next permit, and successfully, I think, like you articulated, is that they actually have come back and repaired the road. And are they going to be required to do the full grind and pave, or are they going to be doing patching?
Well, at this point, we have not gotten their final plans back. Some of that will depend on how many cuts they're intending to do. For instance, on Maple Avenue, there are 77 house connections that they have to do. So we've pretty much already told them that road was paved in 2007. You're going to make 77 cuts at a minimum in that street, just, you know, the four-by-six hole to connect to the house, as well as wherever they have to, you know, do the pulls from one end to the other, so they're going to be milling and paving that street. That street is also a concrete base, so we'll be requiring them to put concrete back in any of the road surface they take out. On some of the other streets, they're a little shorter, there's not that many house connections, so we're still waiting to see the actual number of cuts that they have in the road, and if it starts to approach a number that seems high and the quality of the road can be affected, then we'll require them to mill and pave.
And will they be responsible, for example, on Maple, if they have to do a mill and pave, are they responsible for replacing the speed bumps?
Yes, they would have to replace the speed bumps. That'll be a challenge.
Because there's a particular, as you very well know, there's a particular specific profile-
Yeah, that's part of that.
They could be less intrusive.
Yeah, yeah. That's just one of the nightmares that lie ahead, yeah.
And then the last thing is, I mean, is it possible-
We may do it ourselves and require them to pay us.
Is it possible for us just to insist that we don't want this contractor, that we want a different contractor?
We've had some, you know, and again, on my level, I'm talking to the project manager, I'm not talking to the VP of Washington Gas.
You could say, it'll get escalated quickly if you say no permit until we have a new different contractor.
Well, that did generate a lot of excitement within Washington Gas when we said no permit until you finish Ethan Allen Avenue, and that has been a real source of heartburn for them. And according to what they communicate to me, this has gone up and down the chain, and it's high levels of Washington Gas people talking to the, you know, president of ULS, who's the company that is doing the work. They have a bid process, and they have awarded all Montgomery contracts to this contractor, ULS. So they are their contractor, kind of like our indefinite quantities contractors. So they would have to develop a reason why they have to go to another contractor, and they would then potentially have to go through a bidding process. I mean, one of the challenges that we've learned in working with utilities is they bid very differently than we bid. They don't bid project-specific, and they don't bid type-of-work-specific. It's kind of a very open-ended contract that provides very little in terms of requirements to meet, based on community needs. So my understanding is it's unlikely that we could, even if we insisted on another contractor, it's unlikely that they could provide a different contractor. Sometimes the devil you know is a little bit better than the devil you don't know.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Councilmember Schultz, as late as lit, and then maybe sometime this evening we'll get to our regular voting items. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that with this work, that the Independence Day Parade on July 4th isn't disrupted or in any way pinged upon. So can you see to it that they're not digging up Maple Avenue, or whatever street that is that we go down?
Yeah, at this point, it's, as I mentioned, an eight-to-10-month project, which is likely not to be started until July at the earliest, I guess, or mid to late June. They're going to start on Willow, one block, Tulip, Spruce, and Valley View. I don't know how long it'll take them to even get that far, but Maple is the last street they're going to be doing in the project, so Maple will probably be done, you know, 10 months from now, if everything proceeds as planned.
And we don't want to repeat if one state highway administration-
Right. We've already done that.
Didn't pave and left the rebars to hamper the street for the parade.
One of the other things, and as we get to be able to talk with our state delegates about the issues, one of the problems with the way they contract is it's totally up to the contractor to decide how they want to run the job, once they get, once they get, you know, the sign-off, the notice of intent to start. So Washington Gas and the city can have all these conversations about, we're going to start here, then we're going to go there, then we're going to do this, and then the contractor is not bound to that. So one of the things we're trying to communicate with them is, we need to either have your contractor in the room with us where we're negotiating permit conditions, which is not something that Washington Gas has been comfortable with at this point, or you need to bind them to whatever agreements you make between the city.
They can't legally force us to give them a permit. I mean, obviously, we want the work done, right, because it's old roads, but, I mean, they do have to go through us to get the permit, right? So they may not feel comfortable with it, but-
Sounds like maybe we need to teach them how to run their business.
It's just one of the things that we've heard from utilities before, they, as I mentioned, have a very different way of bidding out their jobs.
Thank you for that update. Does the city manager have any other goodies you want to drop on us?
I just thought I'd take the opportunity while you all were talking about it. I'll just go ahead and just, if it's okay, Mayor, jump to the next item and just note, as far as legislative update, that the report of our lobbyist public policy partners kind of recap of the last legislative session was at your place at the dais, and we will work with the council to schedule a time for Michelle Douglas to come before the council and sort of talk about future legislative items as well.
Yeah, good. We will do that. Okay. Thank you. We will now move to special session, and we have a couple of budget items to vote on. The first one is the frustrating ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2012 tax rate, and this is part of the salmon packet, which has all three items in it, correct? Do you want to say a few things first, and then we'll go to the first item?
Sure. My apologies. Don't be scared by the fact the whole packet was redistributed. I had sent an email out earlier that some of you may not have gotten. There were basically three changes regarding the general fund. That was my error in not including those. Those were items that the council had agreed on several weeks ago, and it was just an oversight on my part. So if you just look at the general fund expenditure reconciliation list, the three items that I had neglected to include in the packet for, that you received on Friday, had to do with the funding for the expansion of leaf vacuum service to those residents residing on state highways. That was an issue that had been advanced by Councilmember Snipper and agreed to by the council. There was also the additional trash and recycling cans in the right-of-way in Ward 6, which was an issue that Councilmember Schultz had brought up, and then a staff-initiated item, which was $3,000 in funding for specialized legal counsel joining with other cities regarding the cable franchise renewal. So my apologies for not including that initially. Jesse and I just thought it might be easier just to give you a whole packet that reflected the right numbers instead of just four individual pages, so.
Definitely.
Okay. Would somebody like to move frustrating ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2012 tax rate, move by Councilmember Clay, second by Councilmember Snipper? I'd just like to start off by saying that for the budget process this year, I wanted to thank, first of all, my colleagues. I think that we had a, I'm sure that everybody will always say, a compressed discussion, but I think we extended it out a good bit this year. Everybody always wants to talk about more budget sooner, earlier. We had a couple of discussions early in the year, January and February. We've tied it to strategic plan. We've had expanded discussions about particular pieces of it, and I think that the reconciliation discussion, we managed to go ranging far and wide on a number of things that we talked about. We included some, we didn't include some, but I think it was all a pretty good process and a lot of good discussion. I think it was made easier by the fact that the city manager and her staff, particularly Yvonda Brooks, did a great job of putting together the proposed budget and sticking with the current tax rate. I know some colleagues wanted to try and get to the constant yield. I always find it difficult to do that when you have expanding costs for things like insurance and various things that just, costs tend to go up, they don't tend to go down, and so I think arriving at this tax rate and all of the pieces that go with it has been a real good job so far, and I think the reaction among residents has been quite favorable. I also want to thank the various people, including some of my colleagues on the council, who helped put together the budget game, and I want to thank the residents who helped do that as well, and all of the people who participated in the budget game. I think it was very helpful to get feedback from people about what some of the priorities were. I'll apologize for looking for the worst-case scenario and maybe getting people a little bit agitated about what that might be and what it might involve, when the reality, which wasn't at all clear when the budget game was put together, was that we were going to be a little bit better off this year than last year, and I'm very thankful for that. And I just want to say that I think the whole process went pretty well. I think we've gotten to a pretty good conclusion, and I look forward to continuing to work with everybody involved on this budget, this budget year, and continued discussions about how to do more with less and manage what we have well, and so I thank everybody involved. Councilmember Snipper, and then Councilmember Robinson.
I think Dan was ahead of me.
Well, I wasn't sure. Dr. Peck, you go first.
I had a couple of questions on the personal property and the railroad and public utilities income. Something that I hadn't focused on, it's $1.45 per 100 for each, personal property in railroad and public utilities, and personal property is not, contrary to how it sounds, it's really a business tax on inventory that businesses have. I'm not really sure how many railroads and public utilities pay the railroad and public utilities property, or tax, but I note that it's about half of what the personal property is for businesses. And we had had some folks asking, my recollection is that that personal property tax is the highest in the state, and I recall having folks, Larry Silverman comes to mind, come and say, "This is a hardship for some businesses in town." So on the business's behalf, and at this late date, and not really expecting us to maybe, as a group, to agree on this, but I would like to float the notion of increasing the railroad and public utilities and decreasing the personal property, really, as the business tax, particularly given that it's the highest in the state and our businesses are struggling, and I'm a proponent of small businesses in general, and in some cases in particular. I have a business, but I don't pay that tax. I have in the past, but my business now does not include any personal property, so I have nothing to gain nor lose. But I wonder if you and my colleagues would be interested in making at least a token adjustment to those two, dropping railroad and utilities by a quarter, or increasing it by a quarter and dropping personal property by 12 cents or so, which would just about even it out.
I would want to hear the city manager's feedback on that.
Yvonda knows a little bit more about this than I do.
What I would say about the comments about the personal property tax is I think the resident that Councilmember Robinson referred to alluded to two cities, I believe it was Rockville and Gaithersburg. I know, I remember, it was last year, Yvonda, talking about this. Those two jurisdictions did have lower personal property tax rates than to come apart, but there were lots of other municipalities in Montgomery County that had similar rates. If it would be helpful to the council, we could, that information's available, I think, on the state website, because I think Yvonda had provided it to me last year, and we can certainly get that to you before second reading. I'm not aware, Yvonda, help me out here, are there any caps in terms of what can be charged on railroad and public utilities? Do you know if there's any kind of multiplier of the real property tax rate that would come into effect?
I'm not aware.
Two and a half times. Yeah, historically, the rate for many jurisdictions has been two and a half times whatever your real property tax rate is. I think before you would do that, I guess I would probably want to just double-check with the city attorney's office or elsewhere, just to make sure there's nothing that would preclude the council from doing that.
Because the reason that is, is they all used to be the same rate until the real property, which was assessed at 40%, but the others were assessed at full value.
Right.
And then when the tax system changed to be like everybody else in the area where real estate property is taxed, is assessed at 100% rather than 40%, that's what caused the shift to have two and a half times.
What I might suggest, if there's interest on the part of the council, in Councilmember Robinson's suggestion, is I could try to gather some information, send that out by email. Obviously, we would probably need some direction before, you know, in the next day or so, just so we could calculate what the revenue impact might be of any changes and adjust any ordinances for you.
Is there interest in getting that information? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. And I'll just add, I'm not sure whether I heard you correctly, but what I think I heard you say was, somebody said that we have the highest rate in the state for that. I would say we probably have the highest rate in the county for that, but by no means do we have the highest rate in the state.
What state, what other jurisdictions do you know of that have a higher rate?
A bunch.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I think, and I don't know, I remember Yvonda and I looking at it last year or the year before. I don't recall if we distributed it to the council, but in any event, we could get current rates, but I think we had looked at Prince George's County municipalities and Montgomery County municipalities. We were certainly not alone in the rate that we charged.
Right. And I have a table that shows which ones exempt which pieces.
Correct.
And I know a bunch of the Prince George's municipalities have much higher rates.
I also remember that there are many places that don't have personal property tax.
Right. But it tends to be that most of the Prince George's and Montgomery and maybe Frederick, and some Eastern Shore do.
Well, I bring it up because of the impact on small businesses.
Right. Councilmember Snipper.
Mayor, I have a question, my usual question.
Mayor, I have a question, my usual question, about the unrestricted, unreserved fund balance, the general fund.
What on tax rate?
Not there yet?
No.
Okay. Then I have no questions on the tax rate.
Okay. Councilmember Clay.
I just wanted to ask, I know what the railroads are, but where do we get the public, what are all the public utility?
Things like Pepco.
It's just Pepco, right? Who else? It's because they have the station and they have, it's all the lines, the transmission lines, the poles, the fact that they have gas lines running under our streets, that's all taxable? Wow.
I'm sensing the rate may be going up.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Want to hear more about that.
Councilmember Wright.
Are we just talking about tax rate? We're just commenting on, okay.
Okay. Any further comments? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment. All those in favor of the tax rate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain until I hear more about what the personal property and railroad and public utilities are.
Next, we have to vote to convene as a stormwater management board.
Move convene as a stormwater management board.
Second.
I think that was, move by Councilmember Clay, second by Councilmember Wright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now sitting as a stormwater management board. We'll now take up first reading ordinance adapting fiscal year 2012 stormwater budget. Would somebody like to move that?
Second.
Okay. Snipper and Schultz. Somebody want to say anything about the stormwater budget? Okay. I'm just looking to see, was it, was anybody going to say anything or go to the council?
On the stormwater budget?
Yes.
The only change made since I submitted the budget originally to you had to do with the Garland Avenue project. That was a change you all had seen before. And basically, I guess the only comment I would make for the benefit of the public is that the base rate of $48 remains the same.
Okay. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. A question about, I was glad to see in the capital improvements part of the budget that Flower Avenue, Green Street project is listed there, and I did, the question I had concerned, is there a corresponding, does there need to be a corresponding entry in the stormwater part? Because some of the activities will be stormwater-related. So.
Not at this juncture unless the council chooses to supplement any of the funds that we are getting from S.H.A. This would be considered an intergovernmental revenue, which would be recorded eventually in the general fund.
I got it. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
One of the things during the green deal that I proposed was adding $5,000 to the use of funds to supplement the tree subsidized buying. And so two questions. I think the city manager came back and said, you should either do that, you should do that all from one source. And I couldn't remember if the proposal was all to the stormwater fund or all from the tree fund, and then if you felt like we had given you guidance or support for that.
At this juncture, the way the budget stands, it would contemplate only the initial $50 subsidy that was included in my original budget. If the council wants to increase that subsidy to, say, $100, I'm not sure, I think Councilmember Wright, that may have been the figure you mentioned during the discussions. If Councilmember Wright is correct, I would suggest you do one of two things. Either increase the, it's considered a general fund revenue, increase the amount that is to be allocated from the tree fund, because that's actually where we're taking subsidy from, or alternatively shifting the entire expense and the subsidy to the stormwater fund. I would say that since most of the work is actually being overseen by the city arborist, I would probably keep the tree planting in the city arborist budget and just bump up the tree fund allocation by $5,000. But truthfully, it's a close call. It's just a matter of judgment on the part of the council. I think you could go either way and not be wrong.
Well, I guess the first question is, does the council want to increase the subsidy or not? I'm a fan of that. That was one of the recommendations in the TFE. I know we're doing some of it, but I'd be curious to, I'd be in support of increasing the subsidy.
Yeah.
Seems like yes. Then the question is, do we want to do it from stormwater or do we want to do it from the tree fund? I would defer, if the city manager thinks we should do it from the tree fund, I would do that.
Right.
What you will just, for the council's benefit, what you will see then at second reading would be a $5,000 increase in general fund revenues, because that would be the subsidy from the, the increased subsidy from the tree fund.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the stormwater budget? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the stormwater budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We will now go to agenda item number four, which is first reading ordinance adapting fiscal year 2012 budget. Would somebody like to move the budget?
Second.
I think that was Clay and Snipper. Councilmember Snipper.
I think I'll try again, can we get it in the right place this time? Question concerns the unrestricted reserve. My perennial question.
So we can go back to the city manager for an answer?
Yeah, we could. So here's the question.
I was just saying, I hope I can remember my perennial answer, but right now I'm not.
So here's the question. And it shows that the unreserved fund balance.
And you're on page?
Unnumbered page, general fund.
General fund balance, projection detail, portrait view.
And so the unrestricted balance, unreserved balance is 3.6 million. And that's either revenues or expenditures, depending on which one you want to use, are about 20 million. And that comes to about 18% if you do the division. And you had recommended a two-month reserve, which is about 16 and 2/3%. And I'll save you from doing the calculation, it's about $300,000 if you were to reduce that to the two-month reserve guideline. So my question is.
It's the property, it's the personal property.
Does that mean, well, I'll let you discuss that, sort of ask me a question about it.
Does that mean what?
Essentially, you know, what's the justification for having roughly $300,000? And I do note that we have already moved $250,000 out of the unrestricted reserve into the facility maintenance reserve, so that the things that we might unexpectedly spend, things that we might unexpectedly use the unreserved fund balance for during the year, such as something happened to one of the buildings, is already accounted for partially by the facility maintenance reserve. So for, to my way of thinking, that makes the unreserved fund balance sort of bigger, if you will.
Yeah, I guess my general comment, Councilmember Snipper, would be that, you know, a budget, first of all, is a best guess of revenues. I think one of the things that every year that I'm always a little uncertain about and probably spend a lot of time driving Yvonda crazy, is what's going to happen with income taxes. If you go back and you look at even the 331 report, we've got a heck of a lot of ground to make up for income taxes. Payments often come in, I think, Yvonda, in August that get booked back to the prior fiscal year, so that's always a point of uncertainty. I think in terms of expenses that can come up, obviously just think back a year and a half ago with the Snowmageddon, and while we certainly got, you know, thankfully considerable reimbursement back through FEMA, there was actually 20, you know, there were expenses that were excluded from that reimbursement, and we obviously picked up still 25% of the cost of that experience. I think if I were to have any advice with the council, you know, I think it's at a level I think Yvonda and I are comfortable with. I think certainly, as we talked about during the budget process, going forward, unless we have a new revenue source that materializes, I think it will be difficult for the city to fund the $700,000 or in that range that has been discussed as a contribution to the equipment replacement reserve. One of the things we have been able to do by having some excess fund balance is actually shore up the equipment replacement reserve, so we can actually try to get to a number that is sustainable on an annual basis. There's certainly other things you could consider doing with that. We do have some high-interest debt that you will be able to refund in a matter of a year or so. But it is an area that I just, you know, I think we just continue the conversation and we look at what the unreserved fund balance is and have that conversation every year as part of the budget process. I don't know if I answered your question, but that's probably the best I can do.
Yeah, you know, this is clearly a matter of judgment, obviously.
It is.
And that's essentially what I was pushing for, that you would explain your judgment, rather than me having a specific, you know, position on it. It's more, I'm very interested, put it that way.
I know you are, and I've got the spreadsheet from my computer to show.
If I can just comment that on that same sheet, when you look at the unreserved fund balance as of July 1, 2010, basically July 1, 2011, July 1, 2012, it's gone from 6.9 million to 5.4 million to 3.6 million. So it's gone down a good bit. And we have a much smaller unreserved fund balance than we did essentially two years prior to the figure we're looking at.
It was obviously a tremendous benefit in terms of being able to move forward with the public works facility renovation and to be able to pay for a good chunk of that project with cash.
Which is the cheapest way to do it.
Yes, it is.
So if we, so if we drop it down low, we don't have that option for anything, and then where do we go from there?
Then we might have to save for it, just as we saved for it in the previous years.
Yes, so we've saved a little bit already.
Yeah, yeah. No, I don't disagree.
I'll just say that if Councilmember Snipper were making a specific proposal and trying to get traction to take it lower, I would oppose that.
No, I wasn't.
I said it.
Right. And I do note, I'm very glad to see it has declined substantially, as they indicated earlier.
Maybe we all hope that you still feel that way.
Yeah, yeah. No, I feel it's at a quite reasonable level now.
So the manager has another comment?
No, I just had a, just a couple items. I just did want to make sure the council noted, this is more about the general fund budget and kind of an overview, is now the appropriate time to do that. I just wanted to just point out to the council, to make sure everyone did notice this, on the expenditure reconciliation list, besides the three items that I had neglected to include on Friday, I did just want to note, there were two equipment replacement reserve-funded projects for the information systems division. Products will not be complete as of June 30th, so that is simply a carryover of funding. So when you, if you go back and look at your original fund balance projection and look at the one before you tonight, the ending thing as of June 30th, 2012 is the same, because it's just a timing issue. Although the most important item, and the one I'm sort of depressed to have to bring forward to you, has to do with the increase in the workers' compensation insurance cost. The number we were working within the budget was a preliminary estimate. Last week, I did get the renewal back from the workers' comp insurance carrier, so did just want to regretfully call to your attention that there is a $39,000 increase in the non-departmental budget related to that final renewal figure for workers' comp. Karen Hampton, our human resources manager, and I will be meeting with representatives of IWF next week, just to sort of talk to them about what more the city can do in terms of loss control to keep our claims down. So it's largely driven by claims, and we'll certainly recommit ourselves next year to doing what we can to try to get that figure down going forward.
I've got one question on the packet item. If everybody wants to flip to the absolute last line on the back of the salmon sheet, just flip it over and look at the very last line, and that's the CIP grand total. And I would just like to ask for any observations that either the city manager or, I was going to say, public works director, but she's not still here, about the trend, looking at the FY12 figure of 3.3 million and then in the five years of the CIP, it gets progressively, pretty much, except for the little bloop up in FY16, it basically, the trend line is smaller. Is that normal? Is it done that way because we tend to possibly take things that we haven't anticipated and put them in the out years, and as they move into closer years, they get, the totals get bigger? Or do the totals tend to stay like that? Or is that things wash from a current year and maybe don't get funded and rolled over, and so we end up always having that same trend as it gets closer, it gets bigger?
See if I can track that. You will see kind of blips from year to year. If everyone's still looking at the same page that the mayor is, probably one of the things you may note is the items funded by the special revenue funds. Those are obviously grant-funded projects. Obviously, the 12 grants are in hand. Some of the other things are sort of, you know, best-case scenario, wishful thinking in some cases, that we will get certain grant funding. If we don't, you will see those numbers shift, or we might get grants that we hadn't anticipated would be available. One of the things, I don't know if the council has any thoughts this evening, if you look at the line for the speed camera fund, one of the other things that I think we do need to kind of resolve, and I think as a staff, we, there was so much back and forth with the council, is just if you notice, if you flip back a page or two, under streets and sidewalks, the only number for the speed camera fund that we did carry forward consistently was $300,000 for ADA sidewalk retrofit. We probably should add in some figures on second reading for new sidewalk design and construction. Truthfully, at the time, I was putting my budget together in the CIP as part of that process. There were very different opinions, and still are, I believe, on the part of the council about new sidewalk construction. To be more realistic, Mayor, which would probably somewhat alleviate the swings that you're seeing, if we did put in some figure for new sidewalk construction, that would probably even it out. But right now, what you have is a $575,000 in '12 and for new sidewalks. No funding showing in the CIP going forward, which is probably not realistic.
Okay. And of course, remembering that all we're adopting now is FY12, it's just when you do a capital budget, you don't have to do a five-year budget, but we're not committing to any of that.
Right. I mean, if the council's okay with it, what I'd like to do is maybe talk to Daryl, recognizing that there are some discussions getting ready to get underway in Ward 2, and not trying to prejudge what will be the outcome of those discussions, but certainly there are probably some other areas in the city that might want new sidewalks sometime in the next five years besides FY12. So if the council's okay with that, I'll talk to Daryl, I'll talk to Yvonda, and on second reading, we might slightly amend the CIP to put a more realistic number in there for '13, '14, '15, and '16.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions, comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the first reading ordinance adapting fiscal year 2012 budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? That is passed unanimously. We will now go to our last item for the evening, which is a work session discussion of administration regulations for use of public space and public buildings. Give me a second to get my paper item here. Give me a second to get my preface item here. Just to go back and remind folks where we are on this, the council had, I didn't put notes here on how early we went, when did we, I don't know how far back we went. We had, we started this process a long time ago, many, many months. We gave direction to the city manager that we wanted to put the facilities process under the administrative regulation process. We had first reading of the items that you see here back in...
March, maybe, February or March?
Sorry, March, I think. And then, as it was coming up for second reading, the council had some questions. There were some, a little bit of going back and going, wait a minute, why are we doing this? And I would characterize it, feel free to differ with my recollection or interpretation, a little bit of a, well gee, what, exactly what part does the council have in this process? Are we kind of flushing this out into a purely, kind of a process that doesn't involve the council? And is that what we want? Is that what we're trying to do? So I pulled that from the second reading agenda when it was coming up, and there was a meeting where it was going to be tight anyway, and it's like, let's take that off of there and we'll come back to it. I had some conversations with some people who had particular concerns about how council-appointed committees might have some input into the process, how that might deal with some of the concerns that the council had about, well gee, what is the, how do we deal with this whole process and not, I would characterize it as, how do we not come to the point of something going into effect, and then somebody notices and goes, hey, wait a minute, I have some thoughts about this, and I didn't really get a chance for input, or gee, I didn't notice, or the council didn't notice, even though we get notified on all of these things? So wanting to try and tweak the process a little bit. And if you take a look at, I have to get to the right page here, if you skip over the first part, which is the administrative regulations for the use of certain public facilities, and go to, because I went through that and made a couple changes, but I would say they're mostly editorial in nature, that's pretty much what we saw before, and you go to the, and also maybe in going through there, I'll point out that on page 13 of that, which is Exhibit C, the one thing that I added there was, under organizations that have provided financial support to the city or provide direct public service to the Tacoma Park community, such as, but not limited to, Friends at the Library, Tacoma Horror Club, and I added Tacoma Foundation and Tacoma Forest.
Did you add the "but not limited to"? Is that what you said?
That was, that was, that was my editorializing as I read it.
Just now?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's such as, which means not limited to.
Means not limited to. I've already noted.
Right, okay. And if you go through to Chapter 2.12 Administrative Regulations, and you go to the first page, which is 2.12.020, and what it does is, it takes out from under the definition of agency, the city board, commission, or committee, and breaks that out as a separate piece, meaning all statutory committees established under the code, boards and commissions, in addition to all council-appointed committees and task forces. And then, under the next section, well, a couple sections, but the next page, where you see that highlighted language, it says, "City Board serving an advisory role to the council shall be provided a minimum period of 21 days to submit written comment to the appropriate agency official and the city manager on proposed external regulations that specifically pertain to the primary function or purpose of the board, commission, committee, or task force. Based on comments provided by the city board, the city manager may direct the agency to modify or withdraw the proposed regulation prior to publication of notice and distribution to the council." So this is a chance for our appointed citizen groups who have expertise or stake in a particular area that is going to have some proposed administrative regulation changed to a proposed, to an administrative regulation, like in the case of the facilities, the fees charged, the hours, those types of things that are anticipated to be changed every year, that there will be appropriate boards or commissions or task forces that get a chance to look at that while it's still being developed and work through at a staff level so that there's something there, they can give their input before it works out to the next stage. And that way, that is basically the council's eyes and ears, and they, if there's a concern, they can come to us and say, gee, we've seen this, there's a particular problem, we've been talking with staff, we're not sure that, for whatever reason, it's, you know, it's not working out the way we think it should, you should be aware of this, this is coming to you, and, you know, please do with it what you will as you see fit. And maybe they do get the concerns addressed, and it comes to us, and everybody says, gee, this is working fine, no problem, and then we don't have an administrative regulation process where something is going out and all of a sudden people are saying, there's a problem here. So this is an attempt to address any potential problems early on in the process in a way that the council has a, more of a representation early in that process. So with that characterization of why this is back and how it's changed, I don't know whose lights went on first. So I see, Schultz and Robinson, I'll let you say who went first, since every time I pick, I seem to do wrong.
I don't know, Fred, when you put yours on up.
But I'll say, this is a good, I think it's a good stab or a good rewrite to define city board and agency, and separate them, and then put them in a position under 212.050 that the board has the ability to review for 21 days, and then if they squawk, or it's a technical term, that's the based on comments part, the city manager may direct, and I think that next word, "to" is redundant, so the may, city manager may direct the agency, right?
Yeah, right.
To modify or withdraw the proposed regulation prior to publication. The only question I had, that all comes before publication of the notice, so this happens 21 days prior to the proposed publication of the notice. And then, if there's a comment by the board, the city board, which can include committees and anybody else who's...
Committees, commissions, task forces.
There you go. They have 21 days before the publication, and if they squawk, the city manager may go to the agency head and say, why don't you withdraw that or modify it before its publication and distribution to the council. So that's a situation where we may not know about it, but the, but the city board would have the ability to work with the city manager and the agency in advance.
Yes.
And if they're still not satisfied, they can always come to us.
Correct.
At the time of notification or even...
Mm-hmm. Notification, which we get copies of everything.
Which is still a period before the time when it's adopted.
Then there's public comment on those proposed regulations.
Okay, great. I think that's a job well done, Bruce.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, to follow on to Council, Councilmember Robinson, I like the sequencing. This makes sure that these boards and committees get their turn early, because too often you hear, oh, this is going on so far, we feel like we're not, we don't have a chance. So that makes sense. And I would say that in general, this chapter on administrative regulations, I'm quite comfortable with, with the gist of the whole thing. I do have a lot of questions with meanings and what appear to me, stuff that's just confusing to me. And I don't want to take a lot of time here to go over it all, but I did spend some time today, when I actually got my hands on this, to kind of go through it very, very carefully, because I've got a background in writing contracts, I've been doing that for years and years and years. And so I have sort of a sensitivity to make, trying to make things clear. Just as an example, where it says, "A definition of agency" means the city, it says, "Agency means the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland," or any of its subdivisions. And I don't know what a subdivision is, including but not limited to any officer or department. And I don't know what an officer is in this sense. Obviously not, obviously it's not a police officer, but we don't actually have officers in this city. They're department heads, chairman, but they're not called president and vice president. So it's, the point is, I don't need to know the answer to what an officer is, but it needs to be defined, if not in this document, in some, in the code or somewhere where you can cross-reference the meaning of subdivisions or officers. And then it also says, "Included but not limited to." Well, why are we saying not limited to? Because if we're not limiting it to these, this, what is, what other ideas, what other entities are there out there that we're not, we're not mentioning but could be included? I mean, it's, to me, it's just confusing. And I just cite that as, as an example, that it isn't, my comment isn't to really criticize the point of what's being said here, but it's just, just to get rid of the obfuscation.
Any comments from the number one microphone over there?
I think our general comment is, neither one of us wrote this, and we struggle to understand it as well sometimes. Do you have any? No, no other comments.
Well, I would be happy to send a markup of some of the things that I find as a layperson new to this document, because I know if you've struggled over it for days and days, you, your ability to...
You don't, you can't see straight.
You can't see straight. And I will just leave it to that. One comment on the previous section with regard to hours, the Tacoma Park Recreation Center standard closing hours is 9:00 PM, but recently, we had public works sidewalk meetings that were conducted from like 7:30 to 9:30. And it's, so I'm wondering if this should be changed from 9:00 to 9:30, or whether it's best just to keep it where it is and make the exception for the occasional need. I'm looking at page 10. Sorry, I should have said that.
Sarah, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think the issue, Councilmember Schultz, is this is designed to say what normal closing times are and when additional staffing costs may be imposed for rentals beyond that normal time.
I see what you're saying.
The meeting you're referring to would have been a city-sponsored meeting, and we can certainly make that judgment about how to use our own facilities.
And the question on page 12, parks and fields, picnic shelters and fields, it says, the fee is, for like a resident, is $85 per day. But is it customary for somebody to rent a picnic shelter or to reserve a field for a whole day if, and does that prevent a second party from taking advantage that same day of a field or picnic shelter if they need to? I mean...
I'll have to check with the rec. department. That may be a typo or a transition, switched around. Because if you look at the fee schedule for, it's in, for the residents, a per-day fee, for non-residents, a per-hour fee.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, and I would think the, you would reserve a field or picnic shelter for like a four-hour probably time period, so that you could have two rentals consecutively on a, on a summer weekend.
I'll go back and check with the rec. department to make sure it's right.
See if there's... Oh, the other question I had, I think, was on this second page of the administrative regulations, in 212.030, authority, top of the page, paragraph D talks about all proposed regulations and proposed final regulations that have the written approval of the appropriate agency, et cetera. And the last sentence says, "The regulation shall be valid even if the city manager or appropriate agency official has not indicated his or her approval in writing." And I'm wondering why we would say that last sentence? Why wouldn't you just want to have it in, documented?
As Jesse indicated earlier, this is the existing city code, and frankly, I'm not sure when it was last reviewed or recodified. We can go back and check that, but I agree with you, some of it does not make a lot of sense.
Okay. Well, rather than badger the heck out of you, let me just take a crack at, at trying to wordsmith this and offer suggestions for things that might help you guys. That's my goal, is just to try to help you.
And what might be helpful is, when I was trying to go through this, I asked staff, and Sarah provided me with an electronic copy so that I could do the markup and give back the comments.
That would be good, yeah, I'd be pleased to.
That would make everybody's job easier, so if anybody else wants to have a crack at, you know, putting some of these, providing some wordsmithing, et cetera, without inundating Sarah with a bunch of stuff, or Jesse, whoever's going to get this, that's probably the easiest way to do it. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Schultz bringing this, the wording issue up. I think it's interesting and important.
It is.
That we write things clearly.
It is important, because this is the regulation that regulates regulations.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's...
And look at 212.040, which says, "The regulation shall be written in plain language."
We'll have to stop that. Yeah, when it talks about an agency means the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, I can, I can see that, and, yeah, it's, everybody out there, I mean, that talks about the subdivisions, is that the Gilbert section? I'm not sure. Anyways, you know, when this was before us several months ago and months before that, I was concerned that it was excluding the community to too great an extent. I think the biggest concern that I hear from city residents about our government can be summarized, that we're drifting too far away from community control and more towards a bureaucratic type of government. And so I felt like this kind of epitomized that, and I appreciate the work that the mayor has done on making sure that the community involvement stays there. I think it's moved in the right direction, but I'm still, still a little uneasy with One of the things, as I read through this, that I saw the section on alcoholic beverages, and I don't recall, did we ever finish that discussion about whether we were going to permit alcoholic beverages at council events? permit alcoholic beverages at council events? I see a couple of heads shaking, and we must have...
When we initially presented just a broad picture of how this particular facility might be used, I believe that was back in June of last year, that was one of the issues that was discussed by the council. And at that point in time, there was a consensus reached that if there was an event that was associated with the auditorium, reception, for example, something like that, that wine and beer and alcoholic beverages would be appropriate. We've taken that and expanded it to require if someone were to do something like that, they would have to get a license from the county, and they would have to have a contract, caterer who's insured and bonded and all of that good stuff, to actually be in charge of it. So, it's not just my 21-year-old kid handing out glasses of wine.
This looks, though, as I read through it, like it's gone a little beyond just what was talked about in the past, because it talks about not just serving alcoholic beverages, but maybe selling alcoholic beverages. And again, I use that as an example where I feel uncomfortable with this approach is that we are, seems to me, setting policy in an indirect manner, that we're now saying that, okay, it's going to be okay to sell alcoholic beverages, but we've never really had that discussion at the council.
Seven.
Page seven.
And it talks about wine and beer, doesn't talk about other alcohol?
Okay. So anyways, that just is an example of where I feel uneasy. And then the, at another level, I'll stay in the same section since we're there, it says that it will be at the city manager's discretion on whether an event would be allowed to serve alcoholic beverages. And I'm concerned that when we interject discretion, and this is not to denigrate our city manager in any way, that when we put discretion in, it leaves us open to accusations of discrimination. And that's a concern.
Yeah. I'll just be candid, Councilmember Siemens, when this came before the council back in June, if you were to ask my opinion, I would not have alcohol served in this facility. If it was a matter of council...
Then use your discretion.
Yeah, I am just saying. I think there are a number of kids going in and out of this facility. I do have concerns about kids coming in, alcohol not being secured, but the council's desire was to basically have some discretion and to have alcohol in certain circumstances. I think we'll have to feel our way through. I would say I do share your concerns.
But, and again, I say, aside from the alcohol issue, I think that giving discretion leaves it open to accusations of discrimination. And I can think of, you know, an example where, okay, we're already discriminating class-wise, that, you know, a cultural event can have alcoholic beverages, but a repass can't. And if you think of the, you know, the segments of our community that attend the different events, what makes the one type of event more appropriate for alcoholic beverages than another? And I'm not asking for answers, I'm just telling you why I feel uncomfortable with this.
Councilwoman Clay.
Okay. Tacoma Park Community Band is not listed under the others, possibly because they're now...
They're an official city...
An official city group, but they're not listed anywhere in the document. We add them to their category wherever they belong in the laundry list of examples. I think it's in the first one with things like what, Independence Day parade and co-sponsored things, maybe?
What page, you went?
Are you referring to Exhibit C, Councilmember Clay?
Thank you.
Is this the recognized community groups?
Yeah. Who gets to use it for free? Do we have to include them? Or do we have an already existing agreement with them?
My recollection, and this is obviously going back many, many years when this policy was first discussed, but I believe they fell under the organizations with various missions that have historically met in one of the city's facilities. We mentioned the Artist Guild and the Swing Band.
They used to fall under that, as the city defined it, but then we pulled out that 1970 document that showed they were the city's official band.
Right. I don't remember, Jesse might go to help me, but I think it was in 2010, perhaps, there was actually a resolution specifically on point for the band that gave them the right to meet in Hefner.
So, we don't have to do anything with them?
I don't believe you do, because I think that resolution would take precedence.
Okay. The Rose Room, all right, I want to comment on the Rose Room. I would just say that the Rose Room is smaller than the Hydrangia Room and the now combined Lilac slash Forsythia Room, but it rents for the same amount of money. Could I suggest that we make it cost a little bit less, just because if people don't need to have the Hydrangia Room or the Lilac slash Forsythia Room, it'd be nicer for them to go into the Rose Room so that we could, you know, keep those for a little bit larger groups. Just a suggestion. I got an email from one of my constituents. I'm liking having a little phone here, where my constituents text me during the meeting to tell me what they think about different things. That's kind of fun. And sort of a comment about a preference for Tacoma Park residents in renting. And I'm also actually interested in folks who have ongoing uses of the building. And so what I was thinking about was, when you reserve something with the school system, and I'm not suggesting we entirely replicate their system, however, if you reserve something with them, there is an initial period of, I think it's two weeks, I don't get off the do it that long, but there is an initial period of two weeks where essentially everyone comes in together, and then they have a hierarchy. So, for example, when the Folk Festival rents the school, we use it once a year, and we're a longtime historic use. So, when they're doing things, they actually, they bump the church that meets there on the Sundays, because they kind of came along after the festival. So, I know that we open the rooms at a particular date, I think, which happens after the Recreation Department has finalized its activities for the different portions of the facilities. And so I wonder if we could have a week, essentially, where we would give preference to, first, to the historic, like historic uses, or folks who have an ongoing use, and then, second, to Tacoma Park residents, and then open it up as a kind of free-for-all for other folks. Does that make sense? So, for example, well, we're doing this one by contract for, are we doing year-long contract for some of the music and things that are happening here?
And frankly, the room rentals, frankly, all the room rentals go through the rec. department, so any changes in their procedures, we have to talk to them to see how it works.
Isn't that what this document's for? Doesn't it include the room rentals?
Right. But I don't know what impact, I don't know what their capabilities are of just opening up for a week and then doing it all, but we can convey the information to them. This particular room, we have the flexibility of renting out for a year in advance, just because of the nature of some of the programming.
Right. So, you know, if we had somebody who wanted to do, like, seminars the first Monday for a year, and they needed a space, they didn't need this space, but maybe they needed the Azalea Room, for example, and they were going to have this kind of ongoing use of it. Or if we had an event that happened just once a year, but that was a repetitive event, so, and people use the community center, like something around the Fourth of July, or, you know, things like that, that we would have a time period for those folks to come in, and then for residents to come in, instead of having residents compete for programming with non-residents. I mean, I know they pay less, but I don't see any reason why they shouldn't get a window of opportunity to reserve first also. Does that make sense? Wait, 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 wait. Alcohol. Lots of people ask me about alcohol in the community center and why they can't have a reception event that involves beer and wine. And the last thing is, this is for public spaces as well as the community center. I'm asking if that includes our lot that we own up there, because I was at the fire department meeting this week, and they were talking about using the lot for the Christmas trees. And I don't know if we, you know, we would want to include, is that just so special that we don't even have to deal with it in this?
Yeah, it's so special. Mr. Hamm has been in contact with me about that. But, yeah, we don't typically, it's not a space that we typically rent.
Right.
Should we deal with that offline?
But it does get used for things.
Yes.
Like, the go-up, does it have something there?
Right.
So, does that mean a moon bounce would be allowed there? If it's not allowed in this regulation, would this regulation would not be allowed?
Depends on whether or not moon bounce...
The city lot's not included in the list of properties that are considered to be subject to these regulations. And it's my understanding the moon bounce has more to do with the underground sprinkling system than anything else in the fields.
Has it been used on fields before with underground sprinklers without any damage?
I'm sure Kevin would be more than glad to have it.
It has to be more with the people that it has to do with.
Councilwoman Clay.
While we're on this part, did I hear, well, back to my small business, with my small business hat on, there's commercial and then there's non-commercial. And non-commercial is resident and non-resident, as I read this, on the rental fee security deposit for the community center on the top of page 11. If somebody wants to do tutoring, regardless of they're a resident or a non-resident, it looks like that they pay the commercial rate. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Has there been any concept of local businesses getting a better commercial rate?
This is the current fee structure that's in place for the auditorium, or, excuse me, all of the public facilities. I don't believe the fees have changed for several years. And the definition in terms of breakdown by resident, non-resident, commercial, was the outcome of a fairly lengthy conversation at the council level at the point it was established.
Right. I think it goes back to 2006. I believe anyone who were on the council at that time would have been Councilmember Siemens and Mayor Williams. Those conversations took place over a period of many months. The rental rates were increased slightly in fiscal year 11. That was, I think they were raised by $5, is my recollection.
Yeah, but the categories haven't changed.
The categories have not changed, and the rates are substantially the same as they were in 2006.
Okay.
You can do whatever you want.
Well, I was just thinking of people who wanted to do tutoring or art therapy, or whatever it is, in the rooms here. If they charge money, it sounds like it clicks into commercial right away, and there's no advantage to being a resident. So, I don't know if my colleagues would be interested in having a...
Right now...
Wouldn't they coordinate with the rec. department?
Right now, unless they were coordinating with the rec. department, they would not be able to charge for the art therapy or the seminar, because the way the rules are right now, you cannot charge for participation in a seminar that you may be holding in the Azalea Room that you're renting as a commercial entity. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think Councilmember Wright was just sort of alluding to, wouldn't someone partner with the rec. department? I know that Alice Sims has done a number of art-related partnerships with recreation. Some of that was therapeutic, and since it was a partnership, there wasn't a rental fee, I believe, in those cases.
I see. Okay, that's the way to get it.
And we tend to encourage people to do that.
Mm-hmm. Great, thanks.
And I'll just say, before going to Councilmember Snapper, that my recollection of the going through, setting all of this in 2006 was painful enough, but I, for one, don't particularly want to go back through all those.
As long as there's a way to support people who want to do things like that, now I see that there is.
Okay. Councilwoman Snapper.
If I could just, right now, if I were, for example, to do some sort of seminar and wanted to, I would not be able to charge. But if and when these administrative regulations are adopted, and I wanted to charge a fee for someone to come to the seminar that I was holding in the Azalea Room, I would then be able to do that. So, that's one of the impacts of these new administrative regulations, is that would allow people to charge for programming that they were doing on their own within a city facility. And right now, they cannot do that.
I see. Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. On page four, under Reservation Procedures, it has Reservation Process. And a couple of questions. The first sentence says, "Reservation requests may be submitted online, in person, or by email." Does that mean you can't mail it in?
We can add that, too.
I would request that we add that. Second, it doesn't say, "submitted online, in person, email, to whom." You could say, if you don't want to hard-code something into the regs, you could say something about where you would go to get the address. In other words, you could do a pointer, if you will. But it seems to me, there is no place in here that says, "We're use send, the mail, email, or what online means." I'm not suggesting you have to put it in here, because then you have to change the regs every time you change, if it's like a person.
We just make it an exhibit, and then you can move it back and forth, but, yeah.
Okay. Do you see what I'm saying? Just something, you know, "See appendix, whatever, for some other location that says for those kind of details."
Remembering that it's anticipated that those kinds of things can be cleaned up every year when things get reviewed, and one of the original reasons for doing this was so that the council didn't have to figure all these out. Exactly. Exactly.
Yes. Councilwoman Schultz.
One last question that occurred to me, in that paragraph that you added in about city boards having 21 days. May I ask, 21 days to submit written comment, where you, how you came to 21 days as opposed to, say, a longer period of time?
I'll turn to my partner in crime.
The particular language you're looking at was drafted in about 10 minutes, and 21 days just came out of the air.
Oh, it was your muse?
Yes, my muse. I'm sure somewhere in there was another section that referenced 21 days, so I figured it was a good idea.
Oh, I was just thinking that, given the fact that a lot of these county-appointed entities meet once a month, and even sometimes, they may skip an occasional month, once in a while, whether 21 days isn't going to pretty much obligate them to call a special meeting in order to address something that comes up. I don't know whether 21 days is enough, maybe 30 days, or something might be. I'll just, I'll leave that as an open question.
Any other questions or comments? So, it sounds like where we want to go from here is, everybody is free to submit their suggestions, changes to staff. Who's the point? Is it going to be you, Sarah, for this, or are you dividing something with Jesse?
I can send it out. Please note that the markups in the actual city code, Chapter 2.12, have not been vetted by the city attorney's office. I was joking a little bit, but not a lot, as far as how closely they've been reviewed right now. It's basically a concept. So, any changes that you want to make to the rest of the code, we would... So any changes that you want to make to the rest of the code, we would gather and then present to the city attorney for review, because it is, it would become an ordinance and the whole bit.
And we, this has dragged on for a while, and we don't want to drag it on forever. We want to get these things in place.
I think rather it would be nice.
Since technically, we're going along kind of temporary process for a number of things, and we want to get these things regularized so that there is a process in place.
If the administrative regulation conversation goes on indefinitely, is it ever regularized?
Only if it goes through regulations.
I have a process question here. What we're really talking about are two distinctly different things, right? We're talking about an ordinance that would change the city code and how administrative regulations are processed.
Actually, you're talking about two different codes. The city code that has had the first reading but not the second reading deals with the section that how public facilities are being operated. And that's one code that's going to have to come back for a second reading. Then the second code is this Chapter 2.12 that deals with the administrative regulations. And then the administrative regulations that are, relate to the public facilities is a separate thing.
Okay, so we have three things on the table.
You have three things that you're talking about, only two of which...
Are on the table tonight.
Are on the table.
And if I recall correctly, what the original purpose was, was to take things out and then deal with what goes back in, and we're kind of in the middle of that.
I am convinced being one of these...
And if you answer that, it won't make any difference, because it doesn't make any sense anyways.
I have questions.
We were in the process of striking language out of the code.
Oh.
And then setting up the process for what that was going to be that was going to replace it.
All right. I guess it would be helpful, we saw three parts at one time, again.
We can bring that back to you.
You know, when you're sending us a soft copy of this, if you could send us a copy of the other one that has gone through one, the first reading, that would be helpful to me anyways.
Any other comments? Anything else that we need to provide staff? Do we want to set up any kind of, gee, it would be good to, we'll get the stuff out to you, it'd be good to get the comments back in a particular period of time?
We'll chat about it tomorrow and include that in the information we send down.
Okay. Thank you all. We adjourned.
Love it.